They asked me to say the real prayers, I'll say the real prayers. Wopila for asking. Wiaa tukashle, ampete luta onyakupki wopila hacha tukashla. Tukashla woi ti onyakupki wa shte tukashla. Hawachin, rikha, tachanki tchanwa shaki te tukashla. Dona hipi tukashla, omgla kana oke apo tukashla. Dona kuja, chante shicha tukashla. Ung woi ti hashni hana, oeksi tukashla. Oke apo tukashla, wopila tanka i shicha apalo, mtaakwa yasin.
Okay, at this time, I would like to introduce our guest here. And let him say a few words to adjust the tribal council and ask guests. For those of you who don't know, we just came from the wounded knee site. And we did a prayer ceremony up there with the descendants. And it was a good turnout, so with that, I'll turn it over to chairman of the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, Ryman LeBeau.
Oh, mtaaki api, yuha chante wa shte na pet chuzapalo. Wuchasha yamne macha. Itancha wakpa wa shte yonke hemacha. Greetings, my relatives. I shake your hand with a good heart. And thank you for having me here today. It's an honor to be here with the relatives in your council meeting. And I would like to thank you for inviting the congressman down and all of our descendants. And good to see everybody there up at the memorial site. As we're working on getting the 40 acres we purchased. And with your help, we got the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe on the name, so we appreciate that. That's a good tribe-to-tribe coordination, ochete shakoing mindset. So we're exercising our sovereignty together, so we appreciate that. Letting us in on that 40 acres, the killing field where our relatives had were massacred, you know, in 1890 as we all know. So it's a good day to be reconvened on those lands that we lost our relatives. So it's a good day when they're there with the congressman Johnson. We appreciate him coming out and we're thankful for that he was there today with us. And I was telling the relatives earlier, the descendants, that it's probably been a long time since one of our own congressmen, congresswoman has been to Wounded Knee. I couldn't remember the last time that has happened, so perhaps we're making history today. And we thank Dusty Johnson for coming out and we appreciate him and his leadership. And we're trying to get this bill passed. As you may know, we went and gave testimony at the subcommittee. And Indian Affairs, myself, along with President Starr comes out. And we told the truth in that hearing. We told the facts, we told what happened there. And we were totally honest with the United States Congress. You know, it was good to get that out and to show them our point of view. And not only that, but we talked about the connection that we have to the land. And that's why we need to get this land into restricted fee status in the name of the tribes, not into trust in the name of the United States. You know, they're the ones that caused this massacre to happen in the first place. And it would be insulting to our relatives that lay there if we put this land into trust in the name of the United States. So again, I appreciate the time today and the leadership of the congressman, Pilameo.
Oh, wopila, Chairman LeBeau. Probably needs no... And we're glad to, like Chairman LeBeau was saying, you know, without his help here, we'd probably still be pushing this bill.
Better day than that. Our team, well, listen, we're a junior partner in this scenario. You all are the leaders that we're following. It was tremendous leadership for the Ogallala and for the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe to step up and purchase that property. That is step one in continuing to properly memorialize that sacred site. And then I follow y'all's leadership. When I've got people like the president and the chairman and their councils say that it is important to have the federal government as a partner in providing you all the tools that you need to keep that site sacred and protected forever, that's what our team's gonna do. These are not decisions that I get to make, these are decisions that we back your play. Tell you, Mr. President, it's an honor to be here. And I'll just close by letting, you know, your council know that you and Chairman LeBeau did an absolutely incredible job. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm not telling you anything you don't know. Sometimes Americans don't want to come to grips with the ugly days in American history. But these two gentlemen sat there and told the story. And a few days after they left, that subcommittee passed our bill that we're working on together out unanimously. Every Democrat, every Republican, every person who understands Indian country and every person who doesn't understand Indian country understood the importance of making sure the tribes were able to protect the new Wounded Knee massacre site. And we are going to get this passed out of the US House. And we're gonna do it here in the next few months. Thank you.
Hoka. Okay, with that, you gentlemen are more than welcome to stick around and eat with us. And I do believe that they prepared a meal and I'm sure everybody's hungry. So we'll start with elders first and then, go ahead, councilman, you had a question? Well, I guess we'll open the floor if you had a question for these gentlemen.
Yeah, I'd like to give the floor to Wendell Yelob, who's one of the descendants. You can probably use a microphone there.
Okay.
I want to thank you, Councilman Austin Watkins. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council President. I come here before you as a descendant, fourth generation, from Joseph Hornclow. As you know, Joseph Hornclow had erected that monument that presently stands at the Wounded Knee grave site. He spent most of his time, and he died trying to get some compensation, some recognition for the atrocity that had taken place. And he had passed away, still not any resolve. And this year, through the times of everybody coming through, the last administration, working to develop and create some form of reconciliation and come into terms with those that died at the gravesite is really an astounding, amazing historical event. I'm hoping that the finalization of all the land and the property that is there, that we can start addressing the issues of coming to terms of actually healing. That's the most important part of this process. As you know, many times, many of the descendants from years past, the second generation, many had those hopes of trying to find some resolve when it came to their relatives who were horrifically killed there, the killing field. I think that it's really important for us as a tribe, many of us descendants, intermarried into the Ogallala Sioux Tribe, and that's why we're members here. The majority of us that stayed with their relatives. As I wanted to point out, that my grandfather originally is from Kyle area. And that's where he grew up, Womblee, Hornclow. Many of the historical people that were part of that. Dewey Beer, the last survivor of the Little Big Horn, which I personally participated in on the ride. And I think it's really important to see that. As my grandfather pointed out, because of that great victory that took place, we ended up at the end, they sought revenge and killed 300 women and children and men. 14 years later. And if that's the most important part, that we must have the United States government take that position to start addressing and helping us reconcile and start to begin in the healing. I'm hoping that Senator Dusty Johnson can push forward, stay the course. I know that there may be many opposition because America was built on adventure and free domination of this country. And I hope that your constituents and your fellow constituents can help and support you in continuing the work that's gonna start it this year, so I'm hoping with that. I'm hoping also thanking the council that took the initiative. I know that it took many turns. I know that there's many ideas of development and creation, but first, it was a great idea just to get the land back. That's the beginning. And I think from there, all we need to do is sit down and discuss what we need to go from here. I just kind of, this day, really want to emphasize that Joseph Hornclow, who took it upon himself and persevered because he was there, established that monument to recognize the people that were killed there. And it became an icon globally. He did not seek any help, but did it on his own. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, him today. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Oh, wopila. Yes, you know, this is... Okay, sir, if you could come up to the microphone, I'll give the floor to you after we have a speaker in front of you. But I just want to put that out, put this out there, that this is an effort from all the way from the grassroots and from the past to the present to make this happen. And to all, to our state delegates, all working together. So we need to remember that. It's not just this group right here, it's everybody. It goes back to history. So, and it's just being passed on. Now we're the ones that were just actually, we picked up the ball and we're pushing it forward. So it is a team effort and I'm glad the last administration took charge of this effort. So with that, ma'am, I believe, yep, you can go ahead. Thank you.
Is it on?
Yes.
I'm glad that they spoke to you, that Wendell did, and everything that he shared, a lot of our people feel that way. My grandma was a survivor. And she told us many, many stories about all what they had to endure, clear to the day that she died. And so I guess, in looking back at that and every time I go through there, I think about all the things that had transpired there. And I think, if you can, I'm glad for the land that you're getting back. But I think you also need to look at all the buildings around there. That land is so sacred that I think when I go through there, I think about all the blood that was spilled there. All the people that died there. I think that if there was a way that Congress could appropriate money to buy out or build new houses for all of the people that are in the surrounding area, I think you just need to get everything out of there and bless the ground. And that's something that we always talked about. And I just think that if it's coming true to what is being proposed here, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you. To get everything out of there and bless the...
Yes, this is...
I think that if it's coming true to what is being proposed here, I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Oh, it's echoing. Okay. Oh, it's echoing. Yes, this is, just keep in mind, this is the first step of securing the land here. And from this, once we get it secured and we can, in the meantime, we can talk about those possibilities of the future of the site. So with that, I want to turn it over to, go ahead, Manny.
Yes, sir. Howa, ea i metakuiapi, ea i leachante wa shte'a lechea wah'i. Naha ea i votakuie i wichunha pi lechea naku. Ya wakpa wa shte' etan wah'i. Ya wichaginaka pi sha elkela opcha kutakia wachi echa emancha'ha. Naha lechea votakuie ungchunha pi. Ta hana i ohni shna cheki cha umpi heha. Na lahan he ungununi pi cha yavana he ak'e ungunuki ni uktehecha. Eh, aha. Eale lakolia thogaakangcha emacha. My English name is Manny Ironhawk. I live in Red Scafo. And I wanted to thank the council members, Mr. Johnson, and the two presidents, and everybody here. I written a statement here for Mr. Johnson to take and read. It took me two days to write this. You know, my first language was Lakota, so I had a hard time with English. But somehow I made it, so I do my best with English. And I wanted to thank Chairman Ryman LeBeau and the past chairman Frazier. And Ogallala Sioux Tribe were working together to acquire that land. Because all that land around there is a killing field. And somehow, some way, we need to recognize that. And that road on the south side, that was part of that. So I'm hoping that that road can be rerouted or at least a discussion to begin with to do that. And because, you know, our relatives were killed within the five-mile radius of that place. So... So up Wakpa Wa Shte', we have an organization of descendants called Hawk 1890 that stands for Heartbeat at Wounded Knee. And I've been doing this since 2008, when my mother passed away, and she is the descendant. And in order to honor her, I stepped in the place and do my best to speak for our relatives that are buried in Wounded Knee. And... Our story, my great-great-grandpa's name is Ghost Horse. And he perished there with his son. And my grandma was a survivor and she told her story. We still have that story. And every time my mother's sisters, they talk about that story, they would cry. And somehow, that transferred over to me. And I didn't know we were having a trauma, we were passing on a trauma. And so I said, "This has to stop now." And we need to begin to heal and start that process as fastest and possible way we can do it to start healing within ourselves, to be a Lakota and a Lakota'ian. So the story with my grandma, it's a very sad story, like I said. And the story is like, you're in this camp and inside this teekcha. And then you hear these sounds going on outside. The air is full of apprehension. But then your grandma comes over, calms you down. She holds your hand and says, "Chakuja, grandchild. I'm gonna tell you something, you need to listen." And she said, "Chakuja, leteke opcha kutakia unkine hana, katseka osma kaheke unkineunki." "We're gonna run down this hill and run up that gully." And chakuja, mahichpa anta hechana iankahe. Grandchild, if I fall, you keep running." So those are the things that happened at Wounded Knee. And if the grandchildren, and if my grandma didn't listen, she wouldn't have been here. She ran. She took the instructions from the grandma and she did it, and she survived. I believe the late Governor Mickelson was on the right track as far as reconciliation with the nine tribes. I think he was trying to take this first little step with all the people, we're all the same people. But I don't know what happened there. So we must take that small step again, what Governor Mickelson started years ago. And as Wounded Knee descendants, we seek justice. And for our relatives who died the most tragic way possible. You may or may not be aware that Wounded Knee 1890 has been exploited since a time of massacre in all possible ways. We are doing our best to address these issues. We need to come to the table and begin discussions for solutions. And secondly, we seek reparations for genocide for our descendants. As I speak here today, I am the fourth generation of Wounded Knee. And... So the reason why we're asking reparation and also land is because when grandpa Spodding, Spotted Elk came this way from Wakpa Wa Shte', he was looking to get his own agency somewhere. But that didn't happen. And with this land, we're gonna build healing centers. They said there is a DNA and trauma in all of us. We need to start healing and all this trauma. With over 200 massacres in the United States, we need to heal, we need to begin to heal. There was a... There was a bill, HR 2535, failed to properly justify compensation for victims and defendants. So I think Wendell mentioned the Hornclow. He addressed, he tried to write letters and get compensated. But because the pre-Wounded Knee Spotted Elk was considered a hostile, I don't know how that could be, the compensation was denied. And also, on that massacre, 20 soldiers were awarded the Medal of Honor. And to me, you can not justify that. And that needs to be changed. And with the Remove the Stain Act, we've been at it for almost three years. And I think we're gonna need to change our strategy on that part and continue on with that revocation of those medals. And let's see, I missed one here. Oh. We need assistance in rid of mating the massacre site. It's been neglected too long, it's time to address the relatives there. And that was such a reason to do that. And then on April 30th, 1991, there was a hearing to establish a National Park Memorial at Wounded Knee, but ultimately failed. So we need to work together and we need unity and get our bills and our goals accomplished there. So... So anyway, I am here. And I thank you for listening. I have been working on the issues of Wounded Knee. And it's been a long road, but somebody has to do it. And those are the things that we must continue to work together, that's what I said. To work all the way, tribal, local, state. We went, a couple years ago, we went to the state. We didn't have a good turnout there, but nonetheless, we need to help some national level too. And I wrote letters to Johnson, Mr. Johnson's, your office, Mr. Round, and Thune. And concerning the Remove the Stain Act and only Round's office, an assistant answered my letter. But we didn't get too far on that one either, but at least she responded. So I'm here today, happy to see everybody. And we need to start working together and get things accomplished today. Ho, Pilamea apalo.
Oh, go ahead, Councilman Poyer.
Good afternoon. My name's David Poyer. I'm a tribal council representative of Porcupine District. The school here is in my district. I have to give you one thing. We've heard it from those who have spoke, that we need to work together. Well, this thing is, how do you get the BIA to come and meet with the tribes? The BIA is here for us, not us for them. We've been trying to get Mr. LaPointe out of Aberdeen to come here. I don't know if the other tribes are having that problem, but that's a problem for us. We got issues we need to deal with with the BIA. So if we're gonna work together, we need to have our great white father come and meet with us, because it isn't happening. And I know you can make it happen. I appreciate what you done on the Wounded Knee bill, but we need to take care of some issues that we have with the BIA. Thank you.
Councilman Youngman.
You know, I want to thank you for taking on this task. And, you know, I hope and pray that you see it through. You know, us Lakotas remember history, remember hundreds of years ago, remember stories. But we also remember things that happened recently. You know, talk about the KXL Pipeline is something that you supported. And you know how much of our tribes have suffered. We got jailed, we got arrested, we got maced. And then within two years ago, you still supported the reopening of KXL Pipeline. You know? So my question is, are you gonna go? One way? On this? Or are you gonna help us all the way around and stop that support of the KXL Pipeline? You know, that's been a fight for us for, I don't know how many years, and I believe we're still in litigation for it. So. You know, I hope. You realize that all of these people here were fighting that fight. And it's still gonna be a fight for us. So I hope you address that issue too. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Councilman Whitehorse.
Good afternoon. Um, thank you for coming. Thank you for making the trip out. I just wanted to expound a little on what Baby was talking about. You know, we've been trying to meet with BIA. We want them to come here. Because they. BIA was created because of Indian tribes. So they should make every effort to come to meet with the tribes. Not tell us, oh no, we can't come out the office. You'll have to come up here. That's not right. They need to come here. They need to come to every reservation in this area. And making excuses to not come is getting old. We're not funded fully. Something, I, I know that there's, um, some legislation being worked on for law enforcement. And, um, I think. We were asked our opinion. On what we thought. Would be the best way to go about it. You know, and at a minimum, I think we should be funded at the Taloa standards because the federal government spent a lot of money. On doing that survey, on doing that study. We're like lab rats. We're the most studied people in the world. And the least assisted. There's hundreds of studies out there that say Indian tribes should be funded at this level and this level. And it's here and we're funded down here. And it needs to come together somewhere. There needs to be some equality. Even prisoners, federal prisoners, get more assistance than we do. And that's ridiculous. We should have IHS. Wanting to come here to meet with us and hear our issues. Rather than making excuses for not coming here. And again, they should be going to each and every reservation. But they don't. They stay in Aberdeen. Last year, two years ago. Um, the council passed resolutions. To get rid of the central office or the regional offices in Aberdeen. Move IHS to rapid. Move BIA to Pine Ridge because we're right in the middle. Nothing ever happened with that. Nothing. So it's, it's really frustrating because it feels like we make the, all the effort. Asking for our. Issues to be heard. And our rights to be granted. And nothing happens. We've gone to DC numerous times. We've met with IHS and BIA and, and I, I'm actually on this, the, on Deb Holland's advisory committee now. But you know. It's not. We don't get to, um. We don't, every, every, every tribe has a different treaty. And none of those treaties are, are, are lived up to. Everything that was promised, nothing is given. Everything that we gave up, we don't get anything in return. Everything that we have right now, we had to fight for. Which is wrong. We shouldn't have to fight with you. We shouldn't have to fight with Secretary Holland. We shouldn't have to fight with whoever the Admiral is now or whatever for IHS. We should be able to communicate government to government. To have our needs met that are stated in the treaties. But that, that's not happening. And I don't know how to make it happen. I've been fighting at this for almost ten years now. I joke, I was a little girl when I started council. I'm an old lady now. So when do things change? When does it make a difference? When do you do what you're supposed to do? For our people who gave up so much. Gave up so much. When do we get what's owed to us?
Councilman, Councilwoman Tapio and Councilwoman Rooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good afternoon, Mr., um. Mr. Johnson, and, um, I welcome you and your, um, your, um, aides, and I'll be quick and I'll be brief. Um, I've made several trips to Washington DC as well as, um, Ms. Whitehorse, and. I'm going to remind you about IHS again. Um, I did email all three congressional offices after we went for a SAMSA training probably two, maybe about six weeks ago, Ms. Weston, myself and some others, and. I was very disheartened to go to the headquarters in Rockville, Maryland and find out that the building was closed, IHS. The SAMSA, the SAMSA department was open, but IHS was closed. And, cause I was thinking during one of my breaks, I was gonna sneak up there. That building is a twenty-six story building and it was completely empty. And we went all the way over there to talk. Because our healthcare is just, it's crisis. We've reached a crisis now. We have no providers. Um, our people are being cut off of their pain medication and nobody has answers. And we get calls every day, this whole governing body from, from the membership about questions. And then Mr. Cameron and I met with Sarah Friday, this past Friday at a meeting up there. And she didn't answer any of our questions. She just gave us the basic bureaucratic answer, which is nothing. You know? So I did contact your office and I know when the president and the, the delegation, when we went, we talked in your office about field hearings. But that never came to fruition either. So I just wanna remind you, you know, when you leave today to remember some of the things that we were going to, um, try and pursue. And it's my hope that you will remember these things and like Cora said and Mr. Puyer said. BIA and IHS work for us. That's our treaty obligation, but yet we can't get them to do anything. And so you as our congressional people, we need your help in this area. We need you to contact those agencies and ask them what the problem is. Because like I said, we're in a crisis state with our hea, with our health, with everything here. So again, thank you.
Councilman Rooks.
Good afternoon, President, Mr. Johnson. Uh, my name is Howard Rooks. I'm the Madison Root District Representative. I have an individual here that would like to speak with you, so I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, yield the floor to her. Thank you.
El Tukahia. Danyan Hiho Ni Na Wopilo Kenichab. Na Mi La Hanska Ti, Tiwaheke He Tantaa Yahihuni. Na Lakota Oyanke Kilana Ijya Wacheon Kiabsa. Na Wochkeke U, Ukoma Ni. First of all, I wanna thank you. Leadership. For coming to the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and to our homelands. And to what is sacred for us, we thank you. And as Ogallala people, we are spiritual people. And I'm gonna call upon my nephew. Ty Londonman. To share the Crazy Horse Song of the Ogallala people for you. As a welcome to you and to thank you for what you did for us today. Toshka.
Oh, Chair. Chairman. Chairman.
Yes.
Yes, uh. While I got the mic, I guess I just wanna share a few words.
Okay.
I just wanna say thank you to, um. Mr. Senator Dusty Johnson. Um, for coming here today and for helping the tribe and our people with this bill. And, um, also want to, to welcome you and also our, um, our, um. Tribal chairman from the Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe, Mr. LeBeau, wanna welcome you and thank you for being here today too. And, um, you know, it's not often that, that, uh, senators come to our reservation. So I wanna thank you for, for making time. And, um, you know, this isn't the, the only issue that, that we have here among our, our tribe and our people. And, um, you know, we have public safety issues, we have healthcare issues. And so. My hope is that our relationship will, will continue and be strong. So that way we can, um. Uh, work together on these issues that we face. Because, you know, no matter who it is, you know, it's our people and as leaders, it's up to us to, to do that. So. I'll watch you, Jim.
Okay, um, we have two more councilmen who wanna speak and then we're gonna break for. Uh, lunch here, so I appreciate if you keep your questions short and sweet so we can. Get everybody fed and, and move on with our council meeting. Go ahead, Councilman Little Dog. She already spoke.
Thank you, Chairman, and good afternoon. Um, I'd like to say welcome Representative Johnson. I am Ella Carlo and I represent Pine Ridge. I am one of three representatives from Pine Ridge. One of the big concerns I have, and, um, there's been other council representatives that have spoke about IHS. It is a big concern. We receive calls on the daily, not only from staff, but from patients. We have no specialty care. We don't have, oh, I see in the report now, I guess they hired a surgeon. We've been without a surgeon. We've been without optometry. We've been, been without podiatry. All of these specialty clinics that we need with the amount of diabetic patients.
I'm, I'm gonna say the same words that I said to, um, the Secretary of Interior, Deb Holland, when she came here. You know, I told her it don't matter Democrat or Republican. It really don't matter who's in office because our people still suffer and nothing changes here on our reservation. You know, we had officials of your type come here time and time again to sit here and nod your head yes. Have your staffers writing stuff down. And still, nothing changes here on our homelands. Apparently you did something so great today that warranted a song that recognizes our most decorated warrior, Crazy Horse. You know, if, 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 if that is your stature and your nature to help our people, then come to our communities and look around. You know, myself and Robin Tapio there, we've been going to these community meetings because of the meth epidemic we have here. We have young people dying at an early age from cirrhosis. We have young people carrying guns, killing each other. We're burying our young people because of this drug. You look at our housing situation. We're totally underfunded when it comes to housing. Go on some of our housing houses and you see how our people live even throughout the winter time because of lack of funding. You know, we, we talk about going to DC time and time again, but nothing never changes. Nothing. Our people are still suffering. Everything that we talked about in these meetings when we go out into the communities in regards to this meth epidemic and the bootlegging of vodka and all these other issues concerning guns. You know, all the, all our ideas hit dead ends because of lack of funding for some of the programs. We don't even have a treatment facility here to help our people that are on meth. To help our relatives. We don't have no type of treatment for them. Our JDC can only hold twenty-two inmates, male inmates. And so they refuse to, to take in more of our juveniles that need that care because of lack of funding or whatever. And these are all treaty obligations, not just, not just IHS or, or law enforcement, everything. Housing, education. And this is all on your guys' part to not uphold your end. Our people upheld our end, but your people didn't. And that's why we're suffering today. Not at our own hand, at yours. So I'll reserve my handshake till the day I see improvements from your people to help us. I don't know what it is, but for whatever reasons, we're totally underfunded in everything that, um, we need help in these areas. Law enforcement, IHS. You look at the ambulance service, for instance. When we six thirty eight that program, they gave us peanuts to, to operate it. We couldn't service our people. The moment IHS takes it back, their funding increases and they're eligible to help pay at a hi- a higher salary to their contractors that came in to work. But yet you couldn't, you couldn't pay our people that same amount. That's just a good example. So we really do need more funding in all areas, not just law enforcement, IHS. We really have a, a serious problem with this meth. You know, long time ago in the eighties and the nineties, it was, you could sleep outside of your homes. Today, we can't. You have to sleep with a gun by your side in your own home because of this problem that we have. And like I said, I wish you made more time to go through some of our communities, come through some of their houses and see the living conditions. It's really sad. But the money that we get for, um, housing, it's barely enough to maintain probably twenty percent, not even out of those homes. We don't even have enough money to, to build new homes. A lot of our two-bedroom, three-bedroom houses have about three or four families staying in them. So these are the real issues we have. And I hope, and I always say this when I end in, in, in these talks, I hope it goes somewhere. I've been in this council for twenty years, never seen improvements from, from the funding part from the federal government. I think one time we had an increase in our base budget in law enforcement, and that might have been in two thousand nine or somewhere. I mean, I just, I just wanna be real about how things are here on our homelands. We really need help. Thank you.
Councilwoman Haverson. Councilman Ghost Bear.
Good afternoon. Uh, first of all, I would like to welcome Congressman Dusty Johnson to our proud Lakota, Oglala Lakota homelands. I'd like to welcome you here and thank you for visiting our sacred Wounded Knee Massacre Site this morning and spending time to pray with us up there. I'd like to say welcome to Chairman Ryman LeBeau from Cheyenne River. Welcome to Oglala Lakota land. I wanted to read, um, on your testimony that you've done on behalf of our tribe and thank you for that. And there's this press release. I want our people out there at Keely Land to hear. And it says, "On June seventh, two, twenty twenty-three, Johnson testifies on Wounded Knee Massacre land bill." "Today, in Washington DC, US Representative Dusty Johnson testified before the House Natural Resources Indian and Insular Affairs Subcommittee on his bill, the Wounded Knee Massacre Memorial and Sacred Site Act. Johnson introduced the Wounded Knee Massacre Memorial and Sacred Site after six months of working with both Oglala Sioux Tribe and Cheyenne River Sioux Tribe to place the land of the Wounded Knee massacre into trustlike status." I'd like to thank both Oglala Sioux Tribal, um, Tribal President Frank Starr Comes Out and Cheyenne River President, Mr. Ryman LeBeau, for both testifying on behalf of our tribes and working together. A lot can be accomplished by working together as tribes. And we thank you for your support, Congressman Dusty Johnson, for pushing this through Congress and with the vote of unanimous of both Republicans and Democrats. So we thank you for your support on that. You know, this bill was introduced to protect the land of the Wounded Knee Memorial Sacred Site, to preserve the burial land of our Lakota ancestors. So we thank you and welcome.
Wopila. Councilman Ghost Bear.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna welcome, um, Chairman Ryman LeBeau, Congressman Dusty Johnson. I'm Councilman Ghost Bear from Waukesha District, one of three council members. And I'm not gonna sit here and re- reiterate everything that everybody said. I just hope you listen to us. We are struggling. People are hurting here. You heard, you heard all these people talking, all their testimony right here. And I saw some, just saw some deep words they said, and I hope, I hope, I hope you listen and they sink into your head. Cause the government does have an obligation to help. Um, but, you know, I just wanna thank you for coming and this was open ears. I just hope you leave and just listen to everything that everybody said. But I wanna thank you for coming. Thank you.
Councilman Yellow Boy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good afternoon and welcome to Congressman Johnson. Um, my colleague down there, Councilwoman White Horse, hit everything on the head. You know, I serve as the representative on Secretary Marsh, or excuse me, Secretary Fudge is Advisory Committee on Housing, Indian Housing Urban Development. And Councilman Little Dog here touched on a, on the issue of the Nahasta funding that hasn't been increased in the last fifteen years. So it not only affects our tribe, but it affects all of Indian country when that funding isn't increased in the president's budget. And I know it becomes a Democrat-Republican issue. But here in Indian country, it's not a Democratic-Republican issue. It's a living situation. We have families living in homes, nine, maybe up to nine families in one home, sharing a three-to-four bedroom home, sleeping on one another, sleeping on top of one another, sharing one bathroom in one home. And so when we talk about this and, and it's tribal leaders that sit within that committee, we're all, we're all facing that same issue with that failure to increase the Nahasta funding. And I know that's something that you're not in control of, but your colleagues as the Republican Party can maybe have a look at and say, you know, in the last fifteen years, Nahasta funding hasn't been increased. And it's affecting Indian country. You see all these housings being built around the nation here. But yet you come to Indian country and for ours example, there's twelve hundred homes. Twelve hundred homes to furnish little over fifty thousand tribal members. You know, that's not, that's being realistic right there. And that's asking us to say half of these people will be in one house. So, you know, touching a little on that and then also on your transportation. One time when I was the ambulance director before I got elected to tribal council, you came and we were part of your escort back when, uh, President Bear Runner was the chairman. And I took you on some of these roads. And if you go on, if you go out today and see those same roads I took you on, they have not been improved. And so, you know, we're lacking funding in our transportation department and Mr. Kelly sitting back there. And he probably can give you some numbers on what we're missing and how to better our roads. But when it comes to our infrastructure, that's something that we have to look at because it not only protects the individuals from calling an ambulance or calling law enforcement, because it takes quite a bit of time to get from A to B when you're dodging potholes or having to drive over unsafe roads. So again, I'm gonna make a pitch about the transportation part as well as the Nahasta funding. That Nahasta funding is key to increasing our homes and why we're not seeing homes built in Indian country, not only here, but around the world, around the nation. So thank you.
Councilman Watkins.
Thank you, Chairman. What a thank, Mr. Johnson. Mr. LeBeau being here. I was up there when he said the prayers. Um, you know, you heard, Mr. Johnson, all the frustration that this council has, not just this one, but the past ones. I myself went to Washington a week ago. I think he was in a meeting. I got to meet your assistant. But I also went up to see the appropriation for law enforcement. And, um, when I was there, the one from Texas and the one from Idaho. You know, I told him that it was a waste of my time, my people's time for going up there. I said, every time we spend money to go up there, talk to you guys, I said, just like Mr. Steele said, things are written down. Or Tyler Cora. All these council people have gone to Austin. I've been there several times. I don't like going there. I know the president has to go. And Mr. LeBeau. But we get tired of hearing promises. I told them when I was up there that I don't like going up there because I said, you guys blow smoke up my behind, pat me on the back and send me out the door. Nothing ever gets done. I've been in here as long as Mr. Steele, or even longer. Our law enforcement is real low. I think we only have maybe twenty-two now. We fight to get an increase in it. DIA bites us and puts more money out there, so we lose our officers. You know, you, you guys don't live down here. We asked for the hear- the hearing that Mr. Steele and Tyler was talking about, Yellow Boy. And it was brought up again when we was up there and they said, yes, we'll, we'll have a hearing. We'll bring it, we'll come on down. We know that won't happen. But again, I wanna thank you for at least coming down. And like Mr. Wendell here, he was talking about, you know, on the pipeline, I hope you're not pushing it because thank you for pushing the Wounded Knee one. That was a massacre. But if they send that KILI pipeline through here, again, you affect our people if that line busts. That's our water that runs out from over there. That's all we have. That, all the other water polluted. So I hope you take it in heart what these guys are saying because they're frustrated. It's not disrespecting you, but to let you know that we're thankful that you came down, but listened to us. Take it back. Do something, you guys. Oh, Wopila.
Okay. Councilman Hawkins.
Okay. Chantai was there. The Pet Uzaplo. I'd like to, uh, welcome the, uh, the congressman and the three trachtrons. They know who they are. Wopila. I'm, uh, speaking on behalf of, uh, Takshuke Witku, Wawawa. Uh-huh. I'd like, I'd like to, uh, also have, uh, Mr. Johnson realize that what I'm going to say here is he's heard, he's heard about everything. And all I wanna mention, uh, is the, uh, Wakajja and Takojas that go school at. Takshuke Witku. And my heart is with them. And whatever transpires after today, my heart is still with them. And we have to, uh, remember our Takojas. It's not about us, it's about them. And the constituency that's here from Eagle Nest, I welcome them too. I'm glad they're here. For some reason, I feel stronger seeing them here. And I'm glad they're here to hear all this. So we can pass this on to our Takojas what we hear today. To Petchatula, Takas.
Oh. Councilman, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, mine is on the FY twenty twenty-four appropriations. And, um, and we need you to protect Indian country program budgets.
And whatever transpires after today, my heart is still with them. And we have to, uh, remember our Takojas. It's not about us, it's about them. And the constituency that's here from Eagle Nest, I'm welcome them too. I'm glad they're here. For some reason, I feel stronger seeing them here. And I'm glad they're here to hear all this. So we can pass this on to our Takojas what we hear today.
Oh. Councilman Goine.
Okay, um, thank you. Um, mine is on the FY twenty twenty-four appropriations. And, um, and we need you to protect Indian country program budgets and as you know, Indian country is underfunded as it is. We learned that the House Appropriation Committee has dramatically reduced the funding allocation to the Interior Appropriations Subcommittee by thirty-four point six percent from the enacted FY twenty twenty-three levels. This cannot stand. Our tribe has vast needs in every sector of life on our Pine Ridge Indian Reservation. Public safety, healthcare, infrastructure, education, roads, housing, economic development, et cetera. We ask you to do everything you can to protect Indian country program funding. Thank you.
Councilman Japan Eagle.
You know, I wasn't gonna talk, but everybody talks. I feel I better not leave myself out. Save the best for last. Um, Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming. You know, when I shook your hand, I told you you were here a couple terms ago and we asked some things of you and we still haven't seen that. And then you asked me what they were, but I thought your staff writes stuff down, so you should know what they were. But thanks for coming and listening and, uh, to our, our sister, our sister tribe to the north, their chairman. Uh, I'm on a, I'm on a group text with Ryman and a Rosebud Councilman and they call us Oglala's their big brother tribe, so they're our little sister tribe. But thank you for coming, Ryman. Good to see you.
Okay. Well, uh, if that's everything, um, we'd like to, uh, move on here. We, we still have a council meeting to attend to. So if you haven't, um, eaten yet, um, there's plenty of food over here. Come help yourselves. And then we'll, uh, we'll we'll, uh, get started here. And I'd like to, uh, again, thank, uh, um, Chairman LeBeau for coming out and helping, uh, supporting, uh, the Wounded Knee Bill and the ceremony today and also, um, Congressman Johnson for attending, coming, um, to Indian country. Uh, to me, it, it's important that when you're, when you're in person, it means a lot. Then, uh, like everybody's saying here. So I appreciate that and that shows a sign of respect. So wapilah for coming.